Ready, ready to chat away?
Yes.
Good evening, welcome to the ninth meeting of the year. Today is June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. Alyssa, can you please read the publication?
In compliance with Chapter Two Thirty-One of Public Law nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building sixty-one Main Street, South River was published in the Home News Tribune on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the Borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River.
Whoa.
Mayor Kindy?
Here.
Councilwoman Valas?
Here.
Councilwoman DeSantis?
Here.
Councilwoman DeSantis, not here. Councilwoman Jan Populous?
Here.
Councilwoman Gertensky?
Here.
Council President Seola?
Here.
Please stand briefly.
What allegiance is required in the United States of America? Is there a law which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all?
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Ladies and gentlemen. We have no proclamations. Change our session. We have five for a second reading. Art, can you please?
The first two are dealing with the state regulations for lead paint inspections for multifamily houses.
Okay, Joe?
Next two are ordinances. They are for purchasing trucks for D P W assault shed, various equipment for police and fire, improvements to Montefiore's Park, and then roads, apprentice, Tyson, Cleveland Avenue, and then purchasing computer equipment and then water improvements.
Andrew?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-one is approving a financial agreement with fifty-five Main Street.
Okay. Then for first reading, Andrew, would you like to?
Sure. Two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-two, it's an amendment to your boards, commissions, and authorities. It's basically creating what we're calling a redevelopment committee. It is a list of appointed officials that are going to review redevelopment projects and give recommendations to the governing body on their thoughts to move forward, if they'd like things to get changed, those types of issues.
Thank you. Alyssa, can you please read two thousand and twenty-five dash seventeen for second reading?
Warning, two thousand and twenty-seven, seventeen, in ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter Two Fifty-eight entitled Property Amendments.
Big motion wait before reading.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Valas.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open it up to the public. Five minutes, state your name. First call, second call.
Motion to close public.
Okay. Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Valas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion. Do I have any motion? Motion by Councilwoman Valas.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Krasinski.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jan Populous?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa, two thousand and twenty-five dash eighteen.
Warning, two thousand and twenty-five, eighteen, in ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter One Fifty-Five of the Borough Code entitled fees.
Big motion wait before reading.
Second. Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Gertensky.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also open this to the public. First call, second call.
Motion to close public.
Motion by Council President Seola.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Valas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion. Do I have any motion? Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Krasinski, second by Council President Seola.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jan Populous?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa, two thousand and twenty-five dash nineteen.
Warning, two thousand and twenty-five, nineteen, bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in the acquisition of various capital equipment appropriating one million five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars bond therefore and authorizing issuance of one million fourteen thousand six eighty-two bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof authorized in and by the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Motion wait before reading.
Second. Motion by Council President Seola. First call, second call.
Motion to close public.
Motion by Council President Seola.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Krasinski.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open this council discussion. Motion to adopt? Motion. Motion by Councilwoman Valas, second by Councilwoman DeSantis.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jan Populous?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa, two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty.
Warning, two thousand and twenty-five, twenty, bond ordinance providing for improvements to the water treatment, storage, and distribution system appropriating nine hundred fifty thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of nine hundred thousand dollars bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof authorized in by the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Motion wait before reading.
Second. Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman DeSantis.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'd like to open this to the public. First call.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Donato, thirty-second Street, South River. This bond, of course, the water mains is also going to go towards the replacement of the water mains in. It's everything that has water mains. It also has, the building is down by the water treatment plant. I think the roof collapsed right off. It has some money going towards that, and then also valves and hydrants. So it's also a multipurpose for the water department. But it will still be easy to make a replacement of the water mains.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? First call, second call.
Motion to close public.
Second by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Krasinski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion. Do I have any motion?
Motion.
Motion by Council President Seola.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Krasinski.
Councilwoman Valas? Councilwoman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jan Populous?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa, two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Warning, two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-one, in ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, adopting a financial agreement under NJSA forty-eight called Twenty-Dash-One S F and authorizing tax exemption and payment in lieu of taxes with fifty-five Main Street, fifty-five, fifty-five Main Street urban renewal L S A.
Motion wait before, got full reading?
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Krasinski.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open this to the public. First call, second call.
Motion to close public.
Motion by Council President Seola.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Valas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a council discussion? Do I have any motion?
Motion to adopt?
Motion by Councilwoman Krasinski?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman DeSantis.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jan Populous?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa, what about the first reading? First reading for ordinances, two thousand and twenty-five dash two thousand and twenty-two.
Warning, two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-two, in ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter Twenty-two entitled boards, commissions, and authorities.
Mayor, move it to council pass ordinance, two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-two, on its first reading. By Title One, the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law for the second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M. on July the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, by video conference via Zoom, or in the council chambers in Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second. Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Valas.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jan Populous?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
For the reports, senior reading hours. Thank you, Mayor. NJDOT fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three local aid program, and NJOT fiscal, NJDOT fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four local aid program, to borrow C B grant of six hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred and five dollars for Leonardine Avenue from the Old Bridge Turnpike to Grant Avenue and Browell Street from Cleveland Avenue to Wilcox Avenue. The NJOT has awarded the Borough of Grant an amount of six hundred and six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars for the improvement to Darryl Street, on Virginia Street to Wright Street, Daley Street from Ferrer Street to John Street, and John Street from Colfax Street to George Street. The contractor has completed the sanitary sewer repairs. Leonardine Avenue has been milled and paved. The contractor milled and paved the remaining roads last week. NJDOT fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three local transportation project grant. The Borough received a five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant for the improvement to Alborn Street from Ferrer Street to Sepie Avenue, Franklin Street from Boson Avenue to Pulaski Avenue, and Ultra Ski Avenue from Cam Avenue to Prentice Avenue. C M E is resubmitting the plans of the documents to the NJDOT full review. NJDOT fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five local aid program. The Borough received a five hundred and six thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollar grant for the following roads. Prentice Avenue from Willett Avenue to Sheldon Avenue, Tyce Avenue from the Old Bridge Turnpike to David Street, Cleveland Avenue from Brick Jimmy Street to the Terminus. We submit a proposal for all professional services associated with the same. Two thousand and twenty-three electric substation maintenance, the Fortada Project, and are working on the full provision of work. NJD E P Stormwater Assistant Grant Application. Our survey department is currently working on this year's portion of the project. And the NJDOT business related applications, we are working on the grant application for Mercer Street, Lion Street, and Mitchell Avenue. Thank you. I'll see you back in two or three days. Thank you. See you, Joe.
A couple of resolutions. We have two C A T one fifty-nines for grants. Received the Clean Community Grant after the budget adopted for thirty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. And we also have the C A T one fifty-nine for the Green Acres seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for Montefiore's Park. We finally got approval from them, so we're doing a resolution to put that in the budget this year. Also have a resolution to purchase a bucket truck under a COA. This was provided for the two thousand and twenty-five electric budget. Resolution to lease the copper machine office on aging. Their lease expired, so we're renewing the lease. And last thing is resolution to provide demand relief that we do every year for the nonprofits in the school. But I found approval till begin July first and end September thirty.
Thank you. I'll tell you about it. Paige, D P W.
Yes, this Saturday, the twenty-eighth, there's our pre make for shred event down at the D P W yard. At that way, it's a twelve. Also, Friday, July fourth, will be closed for the holiday and the no ball pickup.
Councilor, I think, Paige.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Currently, you will see two resolutions on the docket for tonight. Number one nine zero for Thomas Lucas as a firefighter for the South River Fire Department. He will be assigned to Summit Engine Company. And one ninety-one appointment of James Marr into firefighter for the South River Fire Department, and he will also be appointed to Reliable Engine Company. We are on track this year and moving forward. All units are being serviced, no issues. All units are in service as well. This Saturday between nine thirty A M. and probably two thirty P M. We did have a previous approval on a resolution to have a boot drive by the Reserve for the Fire Department. So you will see us on the corner of East Prospect and also over at Turnpike.
Councilor, for the fire team? Andrew?
I have nothing tonight, ma'am.
Alyssa?
Nothing tonight.
Art?
Yes, two things there on the resolutions. You'll see two oh six, that's authorizing the execution of agreement, Middlesex County for South River waterfront. That's for Kowski Park, the portion of Kowski Park that belongs to the county, and this is renewing our lease with them for the next twenty, I think it is. Here we.
Twenty or thirty.
And the last one is, that resolution two twelve, both ride award a contract replacement H K C system. That's for the museum. Work will start on Thursday. They, their H K C is completely out. We had a order for it, we got it fixed as we could. Thursday, the vendor who got awarded the contract will start running.
I'd like to open this, actually, sorry. Councilman Krasinski?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, some may be just going to have their real I D. coming up this Wednesday. These, the program is actually closed and filled up rather quickly. I believe they're going to try to implement another session for the real I D. lovely here down. Aside from that, I have nothing else there.
Thank you. Councilwoman, this, Valas?
I have really nothing from my committees, but I went over, I went to the South River Library website today, and there's just so many summer programs there that the list is very long. I advise people go to that website. They're doing a lot of family oriented. They want to do family portrait night. Bring your family, paint your own pictures, week by week, and then they're going to have an exhibit for that. But there's a really, really lot of things to do this summer at the, at the library, and their little patio is open also now. If you want to go out there and read a book or just get some peace time, they will just go let you out the back door, and you can sit there for a little while and watch nature. And that's all.
Councilwoman DeSantis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to the class of two thousand and twenty-five and all the students moving up. Hopefully have a great summer. I was at the Board of Education, the announcement, the next Board of Education meeting is Monday, July twenty-fourth at seven P M. in the High School Auditorium for the Recreation Advisory Board. We have a couple things that are open right now. One of them is Hoops with Hank, which is with Councilman Hank Tazemian. He's going to be doing a free instructional clinic at Leonardine Park on three Saturdays in July. So that is now open on the website to sign up for. Again, it's at Shine Fine Park or Leonardine, as most of us would call it, and it's the three Saturdays in July, starting the twelfth, the nineteenth, and the twenty-sixth, and Hank is doing this free of charge, and you can register on the Borough website. Also, visit the Borough website to register for pot holder football and cheer. The end of summer fireworks will be August twenty-second at the High School Football Field, and the rain date is the twenty-third. Friday night for the first date, and then Saturday night for the rain date. And that's all.
Thank you. Councilman Krasinski, uh, Krasinski. Yeah, I'm listening.
Yes, Mayor. So this Fourth of July is a Friday, there'll be no bulk pickup. I just want to remind everyone about that. The shred event is this, this Saturday between nine and twelve, that's June twenty-eighth at nine Ivy Way. You could bring all your documents that have been shredded. We'll be down there doing that. Just letting everyone know that we're still doing pot hole repairs. We had a lot of rain, so we got backed up with, you know, days that we just couldn't go out there and do it, so the D P W is still out there repairing potholes. Just letting people know that that something is still going on. And that's all, yeah, you know. And happy Fourth of July, I guess, to everyone, to our nation's birthdays and that.
Council? My group's going to meet June, so we won't have a meeting until July. We really have nothing. We don't get.
Hold off my mind. I'd open this to the public, you have five minutes. Say your name and your address.
That's been a target forty-four thirty-two. Last meeting I came and asked about parking permit plans that were recommended by the planner, and whether or not the council is complying with those, or do you have your own plan? So I was wondering, seemed to indicate that the attorney was going to look into that, and I haven't heard anything myself, so I'm here asking if there's an update. Not yet, we're still working on. So still working on finding out whether or not you're complying with our planner's plan? Is that, we're working on, you don't know whether you're complying with our planner's circumstances or not? I believe that we are, but we're still working on it. And anyway, to know like when the work will be done, and we'll find out whether or not we, whether the council meeting, you know, whether the mayor council care about our professionals and what they recommend, or maybe everyone. The next council meeting, for sure?
For sure, July's my first.
So this new redevelopment advisory committee, are there meetings going to be opened up to the public?
Probably not.
Probably not. So it's going to be secret meetings?
Not a secret meeting, no.
Can the public attend the meeting?
No.
Will the minutes be available to the meeting?
We would have minutes on what we spoke about to the council, yes.
So I could request the minutes?
Absolutely.
Of all the meetings, like the private meetings with the trial person stuff?
Absolutely.
But the public, won't be any public. This is a committee, you're going to appoint everybody?
That's correct.
Going to be you, the councilman, going to be somebody from the?
Land use.
Land use and anti-urbanization.
That's correct.
What exactly is the difference between what that meet, that committee is going to do and the Economic Development Commission?
So the Economic Development Commission only deals with the businesses of all the town. That's all they do. They don't help build in a building. They don't help construct a establishment. That's what the Economic Development Commission does, so.
So the Economic Development Commission doesn't make recommendations to the capital?
For structure?
No. About what should be done as far as the businesses and stuff?
No.
Does that sound any of the limits?
That make, they do recommendations for business, not for construction, not for redevelopment. That's totally two different.
So the ordinance doesn't say that the Economic Development Commission should make recommendations on how the town should proceed with economic development, which of course would be buildings and stuff. And wouldn't be buildings, it's nothing about?
Totally two different matters. I want you to know.
Is that your interpretation?
Here's, here's my interpretation, and I actually thank you for what you recommended last year.
You recommended?
You recommended, and I quote, "You sat up there and said, it doesn't matter because the redevelopment committee, that's the mayor council." So what happened, I know, it's probably a long time ago, but what happened was, what I did was, I'm just making it up. I'm definitely not making it up. But anyway, what I did was, I decided to pull, I committed just for redevelopment, so they could overlook what the developer likes to do. Once they have accomplished what they like to do in their recommendations, then they bring it to the mayor council.
So like you were going to recommend to yourself what you should do?
If that's the way you think, yes.
Well, you're going to get a committee to recommend to the council.
I'm detained right now, so I'm going to detain every member.
All right. And one last thing, the majority of businesses in town are open past five P M. You look at the businesses, they're all open until six, the directors are open until seven. A lot of them, the majority of businesses in town are open past five P M. And there are a lot of hidden gems in this town. There are the Martins, Coase Way, Ice Spring, a lot of hidden gems. Maybe some people don't know about, but there are a lot of hidden gems, and if you need to know some more about, you can ask me, I'll tell you what the hidden gems are and how long people are open. Thanks, thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Yes.
Robert Romo, twenty-first all the way, and about recording of Collins Avenue. This discussion from last week continued here, not the last meeting. Wondering where you didn't get the police?
Was that?
Where's the police? How long would it take them in the worst case scenario to go close? Worst case scenario, they have to travel one point two miles. Anybody want to hear maps of it? You know, lay some maps of it, sorry. Okay. Where these things come from. Through, then you said something about the fire department, that it's ninety-six percent that Station One handles the fires, most of the fires, is basically like forty percent. But then if you look at the town, I'm only looking at the hundred fifty houses in County Channing, those houses there. So if you look at the map and the geography and road map, you find that the four percent basically is all in that near south district, fifteen, twenty percent area where, you know, if you're an engineer, you figure people, then if you look at the four percent, so basically you're saying twenty-five percent of the fires are really in that area to be, by, someone say, at a station, you get first on the scene, and it'll be doing faster if Collins Avenue was open. And you came up with thirty-four seconds that the, uh, the man was basically said? You've got to check, please ask them what it is. I, for the Lord's sake, I spent a good hour looking at the map, figuring out different ways and all that. The best I could come up with is fifty seconds difference. And you might be right, but thirty-four seconds, if your life depended on it, if you was your father, your son, your daughter, that lived in this area, you wouldn't hesitate, but you could cut that thirty-four seconds down. Well, same thing with the police. Police will be the first ones there. I admit that most of the police, you know, Collins Avenue, someplace between five and ten percent at the fiscal benefit. Actually, it's a win-win situation. For Collins Avenue and Terry and Fourth and Fifth Street there, that'd be a win-win situation if this thing's open, because the police, if they're down in D P W yard, they could go there a lot faster than going that extra mile around, takes a minute, minute and a half, two minutes, and then the traffic is. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to know it. And I think everybody has to agree that safety is paramount. And the other thing you got to me is, you basically said that there was a video of someone going the wrong way, he comes driving.
Yep.
And you asked if this person got a ticket for it?
I'm sorry, that's a long question.
Well.
But I do, but I do know that when we did have this video, we had two people from Montesalem area go up the wrong way, and they both got tickets.
Well, I met one of them, I mean.
Your accomplice?
Yeah. I mean, he's just, you know, directly in, uh, yeah. The final line is, just don't push this bomb on some other place in town. I don't think this driver, it's all there. And then you talk about the safety, have any words? When you say to get a truck, I mean, if you have people, just usually school kids or the neighborhood, really you say to people on Constitution which has more traffic, and Buck Avenue, a lot of people will be traveling around them because it's easier to get through. They have children there. I mean, this is like pushing stuff off to somebody else. Besides being a service room, the desk really needs a clean, because the old things, the mess has just locked up on both ends. If that's all you're doing, it's fucking better than great. That's about it. I mean, next time we'll probably be, we'll look for a doctor. And then, I don't know if those kids are more able than the other kids, who are the people there are more able than our residents around this, four hundred, four hundred and fifty plus residents living down there, and the people all serve better. And I understand the whole problem about cars going the wrong way and all that and a couple of things, but most of this stuff I think is more than I can knock my back door syndrome. The only thing that's really bad is, you said it was a service street. I think you worked with that.
The road wasn't even supposed to be open. It's at all, I mean, it was not supposed to exist.
But then.
Somebody got used to the idea that the road exists, does not exist. The planner shows that it was never supposed to be there. The only reason, the only reason it was there was because of convenience while they were doing the construction. That's all that was going on.
Well, I mean, wrong, because it was closed on convenience and it wasn't open.
The road doesn't exist. I wanna, I wanna really go into the conversation, but it's already been ruled that the road's gonna stay closed. Since it's dirty, Paige, if you don't mind, when you get a chance, send some guys up there just to tidy up the place. But the road's not gonna be reopened. Sorry. I really wanna give you that convenience, but I guess.
Safety, I mean, that's paramount.
Not even, not even worth safety, because before we even closed down this road, we made it a point to reach out to all public safety and all of them said, fine, we're finding it's us that closed down. So obviously, they knew something better than I did.
Well, I don't know how many.
And this is going on for four mayors. So this is not even my.
I know, I'm just saying, I mean, how can you justify, worst case scenario for police? If they're on Terry and Collins Avenue, and they have to get to Collins Avenue and Montecello, they have to go around just 1.2 miles.
Sir, I understand what you're, I'm really sorry, sir, sir Sam, I apologize. Unfortunately, that road doesn't even exist. That's all I have to say.
And why was it built?
That's right, why was it built? So when it was, when we realized there was a problem, I ended up putting it back to where it was supposed to get, closed. So you are right, why was it built? So thank you. Anyone else in the public?
I'm the Joe Donato, very gaily street supervisor. The prior gentleman who was here talking about that with the committee, could you explain to me what that committee is all about?
So let me explain it to you. So the redevelopment committee, beginning of last year, basically consisted of a whole entire council. There was no outsiders, there was no one from the land use board. It was more of like, okay, maybe we should pull, pull it away from the mayor council, have one person from the council along with myself, one person from the land use board, two residents that would chime into the concept of redevelopment in our town. It would only be fair that you're opening it up to somebody rather than just us. Their recommendation now would come before us and then we would take, let the redevelopment committees suggest. That's exactly what that is. Now, all the towns are doing that.
Okay, so what you're saying is before it gets to the land use board, before it gets to you?
Before you even get to the land use board. That's correct.
To me, to me, and I've only been doing this for about 40 years, so I could be wrong, but to me, a pre-application meeting is where a lot of that stuff will get pitched out. It's usually with the representatives of the planning board, zoning board, they get together.
No, don't forget that, guys.
And a pre-application meeting is to discuss the possibility, this is what I'd like to do, to discuss what they may or may not be able, what the town may or may not look favorable on, but not where a determination is made, so that the committee who's doing the review has no opportunity to have any input.
No, once again, you're wrong. So redevelopment, when a developer comes towards us, the developer will suggest what he wants to do. We will sit down and really tell him, hey, maybe you should just change this, or maybe you should move on that. The problem now is, you have to keep our voting on it one sided. So we decided to take it away from the council, give it to two people from the council, one person from the land use board, and two people from the residents. Then it comes to the mayor council, the redevelopment, right?
Yes, so the mayor council is still the redevelopment entity. This is an advisory board that redevelopers, potential redevelopers, not redevelopers, the redevelopment entity, the governing body I've already named, and we think a project's going forward, but potential redevelopers, and even, even ones that we've named, can go for the redevelopment advisory committee and say, this is the project that I want to do, how do you, how do you feel about it? They go back and forth, it's like a pre-application meeting, and then they come up with a recommendation. Yes, we think this would be fabulous at this, this location. Or we think this is a great project, but there's too many units. Something along those lines. And then they present that to the governing body as a redevelopment entity. And the governing body then has the authority to name that person as a redeveloper or not, and then approve a project or not. But it's just so that there is more inputs and transparency in the redevelopment process of the projects that are, could potentially go up throughout your town.
Okay, no, I understand the concept of what I'd like to do, but what I'm asking, I guess, maybe I'm, so certain determination is gonna be made before it's even put into the applications made to the town?
If I may, I don't think a determination, they don't have the authority, the redevelopment advisory committee doesn't have the authority to make any determinations. The only authority that they have is to make recommendations. And the governing body has, retains complete control to make decisions on its own. It's more of a, this is what we would like to see, these are the recommendations that we're gonna put forward to you.
Okay, so, so in other words, when it goes, when the application's officially put forward to the town?
Yes.
Okay, the, the land use board?
Yes.
They'll review everything. And if for whatever reason, they determine that what you'd like to do is not feasible, they can make that determination.
Well, they.
If they can't make the determination, then I think there's a problem.
Well, I don't believe that they make that determination in redevelopment anyway. The redevelopment project is governed by the redevelopment entity. So if this was a regular land use, and, and we can talk more about this offline if you're really interested, but if this was a regular land use project, they would make an application to the land use board for their various variances, and, and the board would then do that. The redevelopment world doesn't work necessarily in that aspect. But what we can do is, if you are more interested in this, we can definitely talk offline, and I can give you all the details. So when the ordinance is up next week, and you wanna come up and, and mention whoever your opinions are during public comment, that's totally fine.
I haven't read it at this particular point.
Got it, understood.
I'm not wanna read it, I might be more insensible of it, but. I just don't want anything to be sort of predetermined, because I was at the first meeting of the land use board, and the impression I was given to them, and all the young representatives questioned it, is there's gonna be certain determinations made before that application is submitted, and they don't have the right to review or comment on it. And that is wrong.
I, I think they have the right.
That was the impression I got sitting here in the audience. And that's the impression I got, and it was questioned by the young gentleman who was sitting where you are. And he was told that, well, no, you don't, you don't have the ability to make any comments on it. And that was disturbing to me. Now, it may have been a miscommunication, but that's what came out of that first, very first meeting. So if, whatever you're gonna do, I suggest strongly that it's put down in writing and explained, so that way no one was misunderstanding. You're gonna have a developer come out and say, oh, you determined that, and they're gonna fight you to the death.
Well, understood. So I can't comment on what legal advice was given to a different board that I am not a part of. I can only comment on.
Understood.
What the redevelopment process is. And the redevelopment process, really the authority of the project lies in the redevelopment entity. And again, like I said, we can talk about this, so we can make sure that we're both on the same page, and then if you have comments for the ordinance, absolutely.
That's it, that's it, that's published, because I might have missed it, but they got it.
No, it was on for first reading tonight, so it should be published.
It's gonna be published?
Yeah. It was, I mean, it was on the website, you're in the jacket, but not, it wasn't formally, it hasn't been advertised yet.
It was with, it was with the package, so I've got that, I just haven't gotten that print of the package.
Yes, 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 it's in the package.
So I'd like to read it, and then if I have any questions, I'll.
You can call me.
Reach out.
Yes, absolutely. You have my email too, right? My email, my number? I think it's on the website.
Probably.
I think.
Okay, then, if it is, I'll just hold that going to tell next time. But I just wanted to get that, that was confusing. And like I said, I've been doing this for a while, and that was not the message to go across to the land use board when I was there.
Can I add something to this? So this is really about redevelopment projects and redevelopment zones, not just any general development project, right? So we're, that board isn't dealing with every development project that comes through the town. The redevelopment zones, right, have certain projects, and we are really reaching out to try to be more inclusive with the town, so everyone doesn't think that we just sit here and monopolize everything. So we're getting more input, and they do bring it to us. We do decide on it, but again, it's not every project in town, it's stuff that involves redevelopment zones.
I understand, I understand. And that is probably one of the key things in any community where it's gonna have the most impact. And I've seen what has been done in the past, and the public had to spend a lot of money to correct it. Only problem is, they never knew it was created by their own people. So I want to avoid that. And you're talking about millions of dollars worth of corrections, which the public should not have to pay for. So the rates down solid in writing, so there's no misunderstanding where there's gonna be problems. And if I can be, while I'm still alive, and probably not everybody who will be still alive, but the rest of us.
You, you chose us.
It's gonna be, that's 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 gonna be, that's[1255.41]
One ninety eight, authorizing conditional appointment of James T. Del Rosso as a police officer. One ninety nine, awarding a contract to CME for professional services. Two hundred, authorizing the purchase of a bucket truck. Two oh one, insertion of any special item of revenue in the budget. Two oh two, property tax refund for total disabled veteran for one fifty six George Street. Two oh three, property tax refund for total disabled veteran for ten South Side Avenue. Two oh four, approval of a special events permit to the VFW for an event that was held on June twenty second, twenty twenty five. Two oh five, authorizing the borough clerk to waive the special event permit fee for the VFW. Two oh six, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Millsix County for the South River Water Print. Two oh seven, appointment of a crossing guard. Two oh eight, authorize certain utility refunds. Two oh nine, property tax refund. Two ten, except June second, twenty twenty five, regular meeting minutes. Two eleven, authorize the bills and claims list. Two twelve, authorizing an award of contract for replacement of HVAC system.
Mayor, if we can, we have two eleven read separately.
First, Councilwoman, it's your motion from one eighty, one eighty eight to two twelve, exception of two. Motion by Councilwoman Dallas. Second.
Councilwoman Dallas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes, with the extension from one eighty eight and one eighty nine in their entirety, and go away on two eleven since.
Councilman Janakopoulos?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Councilperson Cilla?
Uh, yes.
Alyssa, two eleven?
Two eleven, authorize the bills and claims list.
Mayor, I ask to have this read separately on, uh, number twenty five dash zero three three one four. Part of a water project, uh, the company that is doing the test pits, they are not properly paving them, and the streets are very deep in some areas. Uh, they did come back and change, you know, fill some of them in. But I feel that they should not be paved until they're completely filled. If a child hits that with a scooter or a bicycle, they can flip over. And some of them are getting deep enough, Art was nice, good enough to call them and have the real bed one filled in on the corner of Division and Wayhead. But I read, have it read separately to have that pulled until they come back and do it.
First about if I have a motion to have that pulled, do I have a second? Second. Second by, uh, Councilman DeSantis.
Councilwoman Dallas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Janakopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Councilperson Cilla?
Yes, with the extension of twenty five dash zero one three six four, zero one seven two nine, and zero one two six seven.
Okay, so, 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 would that just for the motions?
Down this whole line.
Oh, okay, sorry.
For the rest of the bills.
Okay. So yes, then?
So for the rest of the bill list?
Yeah, for the rest of the bill list. So I have a motion for the rest of the bill list to vote.
Second.
Motion by, uh, Councilwoman Dallas, and by Councilwoman President Cilla.
Councilwoman Dallas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes, with the extension from the number twenty five dash zero one six six two.
Councilman Janakopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Councilperson Cilla?
Yes, with the extension of twenty five dash zero one three six four, zero one seven two nine, and zero one two six seven.
Now, we're gonna go to, um, council comments. Councilman Gertensky? I have left him there. Councilman DeSantis?
Yes, uh, on Thursday evening, uh, July fourteen, uh, June fourteenth, uh, there was some pretty big wind damage that came through town. A big tree fell and took down two electric poles over on the corner at Fourth and New Street. Uh, it took right up there, Age was there with his team, the, uh, the roads department, the electric guys. And I'd never really saw it in action, but they're backing in the truck, they're cutting trees with a chainsaw, they're chipping up wood, they're putting up a new pole. All of the houses besides two had their power back within a few hours. And the two houses that didn't get restored until the next day, their electric meter was actually ripped from the house. So the contractor had to come in the next morning when it was light out, and make sure everything was safe, and reopen back up. Our system is able to isolate those two houses for le- less disruption to the surrounding area. Uh, the reason I'm bringing this up is because there seems to be people in town that like to say that the electric utility is, is not well-run, or well-done, or we always have power out, or we need to get the real people in to fix this kind of stuff. Uh, it's just, it's not true. Um, I brought this up at a previous meeting, that our, our score with the SAIDI, which is how much you're out of power, uh, is way lower than the metro area, uh, in, in South River, it's not even close. Uh, um, the second part about this is the electric utility. Someone asked a question on Mayor Indy's favorite vessel out there, Facebook, his social media. The simple question was, with everything going on with the electric, are the South River rates going to go up? As a resident, you're well entitled to have an opinion or post on any of these sites if you wish. But if the answer to that question that you put is yes, and you don't know, why would you answer? So Art went on and said no, because that is the answer. So to those that are asking, the rates are not going up in twenty twenty five. We've already said that, so, yeah, and they went down ten percent last year. So we decreased by ten percent for twenty twenty four, and we reflect for twenty twenty five. I think it's important that, I think it's important that if you're gonna put a post on Facebook and make, and answer a question, say yes, I think, or yes, I think I heard that. But if you're gonna act definitively, then know the answer, or come and ask one of us. I'm more than happy to answer the question for you. I'm also having a report that is of June of twenty twenty five, and this is a published report by the NJPPA, which is New Jersey Public Power Authority, that at eight hundred fifty-five kilowatts per month, which is about the average they put in for their metrics, South River's electric is now officially lower than all four investor-owned utilities, which are PSENG, JCPL, Rockland Electric, and Atlantic City. So we now have what would be the low electric rates. So again, for those of you that say our electric rates are so high, they're not, this is fact, this isn't an opinion. This is something that I care about, I research it, I work with our team, Art, Joe, we have these discussions. We are doing a great job. Utility is healthy, it runs well, and it's very efficient and does good service. So again, these are factual public reports. I'm not up here stating an opinion. So I don't wanna be the know-it-all, but I do like to have answers, because I ask these questions, and this is out there. And I'll have a conversation with anyone that would like to have one, in person or on the phone, and explain where the reports can be read if you wanna look at it yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
I'd like to thank Age and your, your guys. I know you went, you had a long night, this is Friday, well, it's two fifteen in the morning. You take care of my neighbor's tree, I have to watch for a little bit, he sat on his front porch. And he thanked you very much, you did such a great job, the cleanup was wonderful. I know Burton Avenue was the same, you had a couple more big ones down there, and you had some on the bridge, so. Kudos, you guys did a great, great job. Uh, we will be in till after the Fourth of July, so happy Fourth of July. Beware of all the lovely fireworks that people will be shooting off. So everybody, chain up your dogs, because that's a one night, the dogs are gonna get loose. Beware of the fireworks and the fallout. There have been a couple of occasions where houses, houses, courts just have gotten, they caught on fire, the fire department had to go out. You know as well as anybody, and so does Tony and the mayor, be very, very careful, we don't want any injuries. So enjoy your Fourth of July, and, and just be safe, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, man. I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, our police, our fire department, the response that they did the other day was phenomenal. Between, uh, the other townships, between, uh, Cerval and, uh, East Brunswick, at the top of, uh, Walcox, because they're. Uh, also the DKW, on the cleanup of a little small that came through town, and the, uh, power outage. As I said, the guys were right there, they did a phenomenal job. And, uh, it's, it, it's warm. Be careful, be aware of your neighbors, make sure that they're okay. That's, go ahead, Mayor, thank you, thank you.
Council President?
Thank you. Again, just reiterate, um, Fourth of July coming up, please, if you're shooting off bottle rockets, roaming candles, whatever, um, it's happened in the past. Houses have caught fire. Be very careful, you shouldn't be sending any of these fireworks in the air in residential areas, because they do cause houses to burn. And with this weather, you don't wanna be outside in this heat, trying to put out a fire. Um, fire pits in the backyard, any open burning is illegal. You cannot have any type of open burning in your yard. So please, refrain from that. The borough also has a no-knock ordinance. What this ordinance is, you register at the clerk's office, you get a sticker for your door, and those solicitors can come and knock on your door telling you you need a new roof, need new windows, whatever. It's illegal at that point. So if somebody does, if you do have a register, if you do have a decal, and somebody knocks on your door, call the police immediately. The police will take care of it, they've done it in the past, with a lot of residents, especially down in the new area, everybody needs new windows and roofs down there. So, that's it. It's a register with the no-knock ordinance, uh, at our clerk's office at forty eight Washington. Careful with the heat. The heat's gonna be extreme for the next couple of days, so please, be aware of it, drink plenty of fluids. Age, again, I said it the other day to you, thank all the guys for a great job they did. It was phenomenal, and I don't care what anybody says, our guys are the best, through and through, no questions asked. And, uh, happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. All right, so, a couple days ago, I received a letter from Mr. Dominicki, right here on John Street. Seeing me, you all appreciate this. My property and several others in the neighborhood were the subject of much-needed rainwater drainage project, milling of the cold roadway and laying of the new asphalt roadway. While watching the project, I observed the working crew of the local contractor, Jades Construction, who complemented one another in their work, which was well-coordinated and showed professional work ethic. Corporate supervision was there every day and responded to all inquiries. The day after the new asphalt roadway was laid, the crew from Jades came by to clean off any asphalt on the grass and curb area of the properties enveloped, any rainwater roof drains that may have been blocked by the laid asphalt. My compliments to the borough for hiring the local contractor, Jades Construction, the hard-working crew of Jades, and the engineering firm of CME who designed and oversaw the project. Well done. Please let your crew know that. Uh, this Thursday, June twenty sixth, at the Liam Mar from nine to twelve, I have the county coming in, uh, with five speakers. It's called the Business Resources for Success. This is for businesses, please come down, listen to what they have to say, they have lots of programs that could help businesses throughout this town. Uh, I'd also like to congratulate the class of twenty twenty five. Uh, it's extremely, uh, hot outside, please check on your elderly, check on your neighbors, please stay cool. And happy Fourth of July. At this moment, we will be going to executive session. Um, there's nothing that we voted on, you may sit here if you like, uh, we will be, we'll have it. Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash twenty thirteen.
Twenty twenty five two thirteen, whereas Section Eight of Chapter Two Thirty-One Public Law nineteen seventy five permits the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances. And whereas the mayor and council of the borough of South River are in the opinion such circumstances presently exist, now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of South River and County Millsix, State of New Jersey, for the public be excluded upon the hereafter specific subject matter, and that such subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Litigation, attorney-client privilege, and contract negotiations. You have further resolved that such record of the above discussion remains as a cause of confidentiality or required. The Borough Council of the Borough of South River may or may not take formal action at the conclusion of the executive session.
Motion by Councilwoman Dallas. Second. Second by Councilman Kraszewski.
Councilwoman Dallas? Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Janakopoulos? Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Councilperson Cilla?